Can we settle down a little bit, please? Thank you. Thank you. Welcome to the September 25 meeting. Remember, there's only three more months till Christmas. Josephine, may I have a roll call?
Yes, sir. Ms. Darrow?
Here.
Mr. Engel?
Present.
Ms. Hanican?
Here.
Mr. Molnar?
Here.
Ms. Tully?
Here.
All right. I would now like to ask everyone to stand. As our council president, Dave Engel leads us in the pledge of allegiance and Jan Tully will say tonight's invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Tonight, I ask that we work together with eyes wide open, that we work with the facts and trust in our teams, that we work with eyes wide open with energy for what's best for all our residents, that we work with eyes wide open with passion to enact legislation that is fair, equitable, and enforceable for our residents, and that with eyes wide open, ears open, and with our heart, we look outward towards our residents instead of inward.
Okeydoke. Our first order of business tonight is, do we have minutes? Josephine?
Yes, sir.
All right. Do I have a motion to accept or do we need any changes?
I'd like to make a motion accepting the regular meeting of August 28th. Minutes.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Got that, Josephine?
I do, sir.
Okay. All right. For the first part of our meeting, we have public comments. You're more than welcome to come down. We have a microphone at the front. Please come to the mic, state your name and address, and we go by the names that are on a list. And I can't find a list.
You just had it.
I just said, here, this. Thank you very much. Sorry about that. All right. Now, we have a five-minute time limit, and in the past, we keep having instances where people speak longer than five minutes. So guess what? So you're kind of like hard-boiling eggs, but we are limiting it to five minutes, please. First on the list tonight is Robert Komenek. Robert?
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here tonight, and my concern is the progress of the ditches on Eileen Drive. First of all, Robert Komenek, my wife and I reside at 892 Eileen Drive, and for years, we've watched the situation with the storm runoff on our road. During heavy rains, we would not, I want to say, a heavy amount of water going down through the sewer system, to the point that the water was actually running over the top of our driveway, over the top of our neighbor's driveway, and going downstream. To aggregate the matters, to make it worse, about five years ago, after spending a summer trenching our ditch by hand, that following winter had the city put one of their three-quarter ton trucks into our ditch. Not only did they drag the truck completely across our front yard, they ended up damaging our pipe and bending it, which made the water problem even worse. Now, several people were aware of the situation, and I've been patiently waiting for the city to take care of the problem. Now, when I started the new ditch project, I spoke to Jim about the situation, and I was assured that they were going to take care of not only, of course, the new pipe that's going in, but that we would actually have extra pipe. Originally, I was told that we would have 40-foot of pipe put into our yard, because our ditch is very deep, to the extent of as the, with the rain, it's been washing our driveway out. Our driveway now is approximately about seven foot wide. Now, we've had about three foot or more of that driveway is caved into the ditch. On the west side of our street, we've actually had a depth of probably about two to three feet, which helps us like a little ecosystem of how, when the water is flowing. Again, we were told originally 40 feet. When I talked to Jim last week, he said, "Well, we don't have 40 feet, but we can give you some extra pipe. You'll have more than the 20-foot for your driveway." I said, "That's fine, but I'll make sure my driveway is restored back to the original width when we bought the house 20 years ago." Which, he said, "Well, you know what? If you mark where you want it." And I said, "Well, I just want the width of the garage door, which is 15-foot." Foot stakes out, came home yesterday during lunch, and my driveway is seven foot wide. You can barely get a car in there. And then to back through in the wintertime, I've had people almost fall into that ditch. So what I'm looking at, one, is to get the driveway restored back to the original width of what it's supposed to be. But then my also concern is, the depth of these ditches, if you go down Eileen Drive, and not just my driveway, and I've got pictures of my neighbors, these ditches are approximately two to three feet deep. Now, my concern is, is people are driving down the road, kids on bicycles and also drivers, when they go off the road in that ditch, this will be a safety hazard. Now, oddly enough, when people typically, we're on the inside of the bend, when we've had people slide off the road, they don't slide to the outside, they slide to the inside. If a car ends up in that ditch now, they're not going to get out on their own, they're going to have to be pulled out with a wrecker. But my also concern is, if some kid in a bicycle lands in that ditch during a heavy rain, they're going to get washed into one of those pipes and possibly drowned. So I mean, I'm actually asking that, at least where the ditches are the deepest, that they could be completely filled in. There's no need for the steepness of these ditches. And I've got pictures showing, you basically got like a 90-degree drop-off at some point, an angle. So, you know, how are the residents supposed to mow the ditch? You know, I've got a high-wheel weed whacker that go down there to trim now in the past. Now, with what they've done, I'm not going to be able to cut this ditch, and I don't think the city wants to be responsible for having to trim the ditch either. But again, I'm not going to go down there with a mower and risk my safety trying to maintain something that's basically not maintainable anymore. And I'm concerned also for my neighbors.
I was out there yesterday, and we spoke-
Yes, I was just saying, the council you-
And kind of what we were looking at, and I've been talking with Jim about it, and the intention is that we are going to enclose that. Now, we may incur some extra costs, and we were trying to figure out what that was, and we need to come back to council, let them know that, but given the depth of that ditch and the problem that's been there for, I don't know, 25, 30 years, we're aware of it, and we are going to take care of it, and he has told me that, you know, I guess I'm done. No. We are going to enclose that, we're going to drop some vaults in there, you know, we have to route around. You have some fire, what are they called? Fire extinguisher?
Yes, hydrants.
Hydrants, sorry. And then there's a water service right there, too. So it's kind of a funny setup, but we were talking about a way we can route around that with a vault, and it would alleviate that problem, and you'd have no ditch anymore. And obviously, the driveway during construction, it's not going to be exactly 20 feet, but once we get back to restoration and, you know, we put the boxes in there, it's going to be what you want, and I don't think we're going to have any problem there ever again.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you.
I'd just make a comment, too. I was out there, I spoke to quite a few of the neighbors, and I think Jim was there also, and I think that from the discussions that we had with the neighbors, it looks like there's going to be an adjustment to the original plan, and, you know, I was very happy to talk to everybody and Mr. Komenek, too, and I agree, there's going to be a little more cost, and we'll have to deal with it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Shirley Couth.
Okay. Shirley Couth, 902 Eileen Drive. I live next door to Bob. And I'm just going to briefly talk about the Eileen problem, because he stated everything quite well. But I was very pleased yesterday when, you know, we were trying to get people from City Hall and everything involved in that, and we were finally able to do that, and Sylvie was available to come out, and Jim was available to come out, and I think he really put some of the concerns of the residents at rest after we talked about it, walked the problem areas and so forth, and that conversation and communication really settled a lot of things down. Now, if that gets followed through, and we get what we need there to take away the hazard of that area, and by the way, that always does run water down it constantly. Jim assures me that that water's going to go away. We'll wait and see. I don't know. I'll buy him a cup of coffee if it does. But anyway, so I think that the communication part is what was missing, and, you know, just keeping everybody involved in the loop, and that has gone a long way toward getting resolved. Now, the second thing is on the senior snow plowing, and I know that we're looking at various contractors and so forth for that for this year, and I know we had one we were very happy with last year. There is, in my estimation, there is not enough money difference overall for the season to go with an unknown factor. You have someone came in, bailed us out in the middle of the year last year and did a marvelous job, and everybody was happy, and to me, he's deserved the right to come back. It's always good to look at price, but at this point, do we want the headaches that could come with that? I don't know. So unless we look more into what this person's history is and how they service accounts, I don't know how you can know that. But I'm just thinking, for the little bit of extra money that it is, I'd go with the guy we had last year, and that's my vote. And my husband plowed the senior drives in a lot of Macedonia probably back in the 90s, and, you know, he knows how important it is to these people to get their driveways plowed and get them plowed on time. Somebody with more equipment, you might pay a little more money because he has more equipment, but he's going to be there for you. Somebody that has less equipment is going to be a problem, you know, and you're just asking for more phone calls. So, you know, so we've been through that, and I mean, my husband would go sometimes, and there'd be somebody waiting through the snow to get down to their paper, get their newspaper, you know, but he wasn't allowed to go out until it was two inches of snow, and then he could go. And so, you know, I just think anything we can do to make it easy, the difference in the money is not that much.
Good point.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's it for public comments this evening, so we're going to move right into pending in or new legislation, starting with ordinance number 90, 2014.
It's you, Dave.
Well, I thought Nick was going to offer for a third reading.
I had you, too.
No, nine.
Yeah, I had you.
All right. I'd like to offer ordinance 90, 2014 for a third reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to engage the state auditor to create a tailored performance audit of the city of Macedonia departments and services.
All right. Before I move forward with this, I would like to thank Jim Pires for coming out here tonight. He's in our audience right now. He's explained to us what a performance audit is all about. It basically is comparing us to other communities to see if we can do things more efficiently or if we can do them at a better cost. Performance audit is not like the regular audit we get every single year. The regular audit is more about procedural, all right, where this audit will actually look and see how we can do things better. So it's your pleasure, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to amend section one, removing the word "engage" and replacing it with the words "to enter into discussion regarding the scope and service of the audit" with, and then that would be it. And then also then remove section three in its entirety, as we discussed in the work session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post? And now, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I would ask that we pass, in post-ordinance 90, 2014, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanican?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance 90, 2014 passes. Moving on, ordinance number 92, 2014.
Mayor, I would offer ordinance 92, 2014 for its third reading by title only.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into revised agreement with some accounting and other participating municipalities with regards to the intergovernmental memorandum of understanding for job creation and retention and tax revenue sharing, with the term beginning October 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015.
And what's your pleasure?
I move that we pass, in post, according to law, ordinance 92, 2014.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanican?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
This is an important ordinance that was passed to create more and more cooperation among communities. With this ordinance and memorandum of understanding in place, we won't have people coming here and pilfering our businesses to take them to their communities. That was becoming more and more of a problem. So the county has worked with the municipalities, and most of the municipalities around us are involved with this, where if you do get somebody that comes from, say, for instance, Macedonia and goes to Twinsburg, Macedonia will continue to receive half the city income tax that we did. Also, this will enable us, because we're doing the right thing, it gives us opportunities to get more funding. So this was a good thing. Thank you. Moving on to ordinance 93, 2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 93, 2014 for its second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance providing for a senior snow removal program for the 2014-2015 winter
Moving on, ordinance number 95-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 95, 2014 for a first, second, and third reading by title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
An ordinance confirming the appointment of Jason McRitchie to the position of full-time maintenance worker in the service department of the city of Macedonia to fill the vacancy created by a recent retirement.
Jim, can you tell us a little bit about Jason?
Yes.
Use your mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jason used to work here about nine, 10 years ago, and then he left. And since he's left, he's gotten more involved in the construction-type industry. He worked for Mid-Ohio, so he's very familiar now with the asphalt industry. So I felt that he'd be, and he knows equipment, knows how to run it, so I thought he'd be a good asset for our company, for our city, for now and for the future.
All right. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass, in post-ordinance 95, 2014, according to law.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanican?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
Ordinance 95 passes. Welcome, Jason, to our family. Jim. Ordinance number 96-2014.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance 96, 2014 for its first reading by title only.
An ordinance amending the 2014 annual appropriation ordinance, number 26, 2014.
Ordinance number 97.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to offer ordinance number 97, 2014, for its first reading by
An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of funds from the unappropriated fund balance to provide for current expenses in the service department of the city of Macedonia.
Moving on to resolution number 98.
Mayor, I'd like to offer resolution number 98, 2014 for its first, second, and third reading by title only, please.
Did you get that second, Josephine?
I did.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
A resolution authorizing the advance of local taxes by Summit County Fiscal Office for 2014 tax year payable in 2015.
And what's your pleasure?
This is traditional housekeeping that we do every year. It's the way that we can ask for our taxes that are paid to Summit County, so there's not a lot of, it's basic 101 work that we have to do. So I would move that we pass, in post, according to law, resolution number 98, 2014, please.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanican?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
Yes.
All right. Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider veto ordinance 82, 2014, an emergency ordinance amending codified section 1171.15B to allow a storage barn as a non-residential use in a residential district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No. Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Yes.
Mr. Engel?
Yes.
Ms. Hanican?
Yes.
Mr. Molnar?
Yes.
Ms. Tully?
No.
Are there any other motions or legislative actions this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to affirm the mayor's termination of Finance Director Scott Swab. I apologize for that. And it's my understanding that a yes vote would be to terminate, a no vote would be not to terminate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No.
No.
Roll call.
Ms. Darrow?
Which one am I doing here?
We're doing-
No, I mean, which one do we got to say first?
The motion is to affirm the mayor's termination.
So it's no.
No, you-
No.
Yes.
He's-
Well, I'm sorry, I shouldn't-
Yeah, you did it, yeah, the way you said it, it's kind of-
All right. So-
You got to do one at a time, right?
Right. Well, it's my understa-, the way I intended, and law director will tell me if I did it wrong, the motion was to affirm, so if you want to terminate, you would vote yes.
Right. And there's only one motion on the floor.
Oh.
Right.
Okay. So, so the, wait, so which one, okay, go on and say that again.
To terminate Mr. Swab, you would vote yes. To return Mr. Swab to his position, you would vote no. Is that correct, Mr. Hanselak?
Correct.
I would like to return Mr. Swab to his position.
The motion on the floor is to affirm the mayor's termination, so your answer is yes or no?
No.
Mr. Engel? Ms. Hanican?
No.
Mr. Molnar?
We've got a lot of conversation regarding this, of which it's been made known now that this is a public matter. We have, I'd say, probably 200 pages of, let's call them accusations against the finance director. In trying to be astute in my review of these, I wanted to point out a few things. It's apparent that this is already going to be a reaffirmation of him coming back, but I want to point out a few things that are factual that cannot be disputed. The first thing is ODNR. There was a lot of conversation about fishing poles that were over-ordered or whatever the case may be. Somehow, the extra fishing poles found their way to Canal Fulton where Mr. Swab lives and his accounts. I think it's a conflict of interest when we get into a situation like this, because knowing that, it's almost unethical and a conflict of interest to just communicate with them to say, "Well, I've got some extra poles, I'll sell them to you." There was a lot of talk around how those poles were paid for. We were supposed to get a refund back for those poles, which would have been the appropriate action. That did not take place. There was also a total of four contractors from Canal Fulton. One would look at that from the public and say, "Smells a little fishy." Not saying it is, not saying it's not, but that is something, when you look at it, you start to question, "Okay, well, why do we have four contractors from where this gentleman lives?" One of the other points is, there was a statement made in the mayor's office. It's a signed witness statement by more than one person of a very, what I find to be controversial thing to say to the mayor, who, if any of us went to our job and said something to our boss to the effect of, "There's nothing you can do to me," I've got a problem with that. Some members of this council wanted the people that made those statements to take a polygraph test. There's probably eight to 10 people that have made accusations about what has come to us, and the finger is pointed everywhere but right back here. I'm starting to wonder why that's happening. The most damning thing that I've read, and I've really got a problem with, we brought in a painter, of which Mr. Digatano wanted to hire, to paint portions of City Hall. That painter gave an estimation for the work of $2,600. I have an email dated December 2, 2013, and I'm going to quote this from the email that I have. "Scott didn't like the price, so I asked if he wanted me to get more quotes, and he said he would get someone." Well, he did get someone. That someone was not registered with this community, was from Canal Fulton, had a criminal record the size of Texas, and was popped for a meth lab in his home. Pretty serious stuff, I think, when you change something like that up. The biggest thing that I've got a problem with, we knew $2,600 was our quote. We paid that man $2,500. Conflict of interest? Unethical? I think so. Needs to be reviewed? Needs to be talked about? I think so. So just to bring this man back without giving more due process to what's happening here is a major problem to me, and I think the public should know exactly what this is all about, and I know portions of that has been brought out to the public. But we have to make good decisions. I hate having black eyes on my community. I'm very proud of where I live, and these types of things that are happening and being supported, it's wrong. It's unethical, and I can't believe that we wouldn't look into this more before bringing him back, and I'm truly ashamed by it.
Ms. Tully?
I have six points that I had to consider with all these papers. One is there's falsification of documents. And the comments made within there is, I was told to do that by someone, and then when we went and talked to that person, they said they never had that conversation. We're not talking within-house, we're talking ODNR. We're talking outside this community. We're talking about that everything that was done was not viable, was not allowed by their processes. Ignoring the legislation and our ordinance requirements, and our legislation states you will get bids, and then you will bring those bids back. I was ignored. This is before I get on here, and the first thing I asked is, "Well, where were the bids for the time clocks? How come they're already installed? How come they're already being in use?" The bids, the ordinance specifically stated you will go out and get bids and bring it back to council. The reply is, "Well, I use this other piece of legislation or this other law." There's a reason why we ask for that, and I don't know why council would say it's okay for this, but then hold our other departments' feet to the fire when we talk about getting the best person, not just for the best price, exactly what you said, for snow plowing, for garbage, for anything that we do in our roads. The use of friends, for painting, for insurance, for cronyism, okay, so I know somebody who maybe can be able to do the job, but when the job is only $100 less and we hear more about this person, and, "Oh, by the way, he's painting in your house," that starts to get you to step back and think. Are we doing favors for people that I get favors back from? And I question council, because when it was placed for Mrs. Molnar to be returned to Parks and Rec, there was a question of, "Well, why would we do that?" That's favoritism. We need new people. The threats? Well, we get told we need polygraphs from the people that observed that, but there wasn't one person in that room. There were multiple people in that room. And what does that say to our fellow employees? That we don't believe you, we only believe this person. And it wasn't this year, the rebuttal was for this year, it was last year. And as I had noted to Counsel Engel, even more disturbing to me was the last paragraph, which is more of an ageism, sexual harassment. I'm not sure what the official term is, but I've been there in my job. The comments you just don't make. They're fireable offenses. And why, in city government, we believe they're not? But in the public sector, we say no, but in the private sector, you're shown the door. I'm baffled. I don't wanna be the Football League of Ohio. And last but not least, the threat was withholding purchase orders, and then there was evidence that that was done. I absolutely vote no in returning, but vote yes in upholding the termination.
The results, sir?
Uh, three to two, sir.
All right, it's three to two, and the termination is overturned. Moving on. We're done with public comments, I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, no. We just heard information...
This is a council meeting? This is not a meeting for him?
Well, I...
So he does not need to speak at this point. Thank you.
This is the mayor's meeting.
I understand, no, it's our meeting, number one, Ms. Tully.
The mayor preside.
He has a right to say something, because you folks have said things right here.
I reiterated what was in his testimony.
He has rebutted much of this. You have...
I'll defer to Law Department.
I say you give him thirty seconds to say something.
You have an agenda, an agenda for public comment, that's what you're...
Okay, then, I'm going to...
So this is a good motion is off before there's a bad issue.
Well, okay, then, we... It's just like the rest of this gone on here. We've heard about two years or three years of investigations, and when in fact, I've reviewed every bill from you folks for the last three years. And when this investigation started was when there was an issue between Mr. Deemer and the Finance Director concerning the payment of your fees. And he was following the Ohio Revised Code. You folks started an investigation accordingly to the mayor at the behest of him. There was no investigation last year, there was no investigation the previous year, because I have all the bills, sir. So, I'm just telling you... What?
What was that date?
What was what date?
That you have that the investigation began...
I'm saying in April, that's the first...
What year?
This year. And you...
Like the fact that the investigation was occurring in two thousand and thirteen, but it was under the retainer?
Yes, I looked at everything. You, sir, are...
Okay.
I'm just telling you, the way that your bills are patterned is very clear. And you have something under prosecution, sometimes you have it under retainer. There is no evidence before April of this year that you did anything at the behest of anybody. So, let me just say this.
You're making accusations.
I am telling you what I observed, sir. That's all.
Okay.
Okay? Now, as with regard to this whole issue of how this all came about, I think we've had a pretty clear picture from the allegations, the rebuttals. Why the council wants to move forward, because he's a good Finance Director, and the majority on council did not find that the investigations were persuasive of any wrongdoing, number one. Number two, the... When I was the one who asked for polygraphs, and the reason I did, not for everything that was said, just for the accusation of criminal conduct. And that's a normal practice. If you have people accusing other people of criminal conduct, that's normal to polygraph everyone involved. And there were three people involved, that's all I asked for. And that's not an insult to all our employees. What I'm saying is, when you do that, you make that accusation, you should be able to back it up. And I believe that everybody should be asked. If they don't wanna volunteer, they don't have to. But I'm not saying Mr. Swab shouldn't be polygraphed, he should be. And that should resolve the biggest issue from the standpoint that I have. But there is no evidence at this point that would require a termination. We think we need to move ahead, and we have voted to retain him in position. So, thank you.
How does this problem completely revert back to the Legal Department every time? Now, I know, and I'm very aware, and it's very public, that you've got a real big problem with the Legal Department, and you've masked that by stating that their bills are ambiguous. The finger pointing keeps occurring, and I said at the beginning of the year, when you came on, Sylvia, that if there was something that you found within that Legal Department that was not right, I'd be the first person to stand behind you and remove them. To this date, you've given me nothing. It always comes back to Joe Deemer's office, Joe Deemer's office, Joe Deemer's office. Now, it's the attack on them and GPD, and it just keeps going in circles, but you're not providing me with anything to substantiate your allegations. Now, we have something else on the table here that you just brought the man back, when there's some serious stuff. You wanted to have a polygraph test, but yet you brought him back before you even decided to do that. Explain yourself.
The mayor rejected that, as you recall. Mayor already rejected that option. So I'm just saying that I'm the one... Somebody said, I believe it was Jan, that said, "I brought that up." I just clarified who it was.
I did not reject it.
You did, sir. I have the email from Sunday.
Maybe there was an instance in there saying, "I don't feel it's necessary to doubt when multiple people hear the statements to have a..."
No, you said they were outraged and insulted, that anybody... You said you spoke to them, and they were outraged.
They were outraged and insulted.
Okay.
So now you're bringing somebody back into a situation where we have employees that are outraged and insulted, that you're not believing them, and you're believing the other one.
I did not say... I simply said, and you rejected the concept of that everybody...
So what? It's what was said that's important or not said. And we have witnesses, we have people who have testified that our employees...
They haven't testified, sir. They haven't put it under oath.
Employees, non-employees, people that are vendors, people that are from the ODNR.
Okay.
And it's all in writing, from them.
I got it, I got it. You know, I am willing to cease this at this point.
Moving on, is there any correspondence?
Mr. Mayor, can I say one more thing? So you're just willing to ignore these allegations? This means nothing. So you, as the public, take a long, hard look at who've you elected to be here, because to ignore this is a travesty. This is embarrassing.
Well, Nick...
You're not focusing on the issue. And before you try to rip me up on this, let me explain myself. There's a lot of stuff here. We could've talked about it in the work session, about saying, "Hey, you know, maybe we can go down a different path to make sure we're doing our due diligence, to make sure that we're doing the right thing." There was none of that. It just came out here, there was nothing from two of the three of you, and I'm a little concerned about that.
Nick, I would like to say something.
Let me finish, please. To not at least address some of the things that are on there, and everything is just, "That's a lie. That's a lie." There's eight to ten people, not one or two, that made statements that you're just completely ignoring.
No, we are not, sir. And the thing that you need to understand is this, and the public needs to understand, this was all handled in executive session. There were, there was tremendous preparation by all parties on that, you know it. I can't go into it in public, as you know. But we went through this in great detail. It's not like we said, "Oh, what the heck, we don't care." That is just unfair. It's the kind of thing that you say when you're trying to cover your tracks.
Don't point at me.
And that's it. That's it. You're accusing Neo doing something.
This was executive session, it was private. The mayor did that because he wanted to avoid this kind of situation.
He's the one that publicized it to the news.
Excuse me.
And now Scott can't discuss it.
I'm not done.
Well, gee.
What happened then is there was an email from one of the council members who made it public. Even though it was still considered executive potential... There's two reasons you go into executive session. Litigation and personnel. And Scott, you're back there with a smile on your face, because you got three people here who say this is all balarchy. You know what?
You let me speak.
If I had, all the accusations that were made, if you had just once in any of this document said, "You know what, I did screw up this one time, and I'll fix it." I may have had a little more consideration for it. But then I had a look at the other people who were talking about what the issues were. They didn't blame anybody else. And every document in here, you blame someone else.
Can I have thirty seconds?
I just like to say that we have a... Wait a second, Sylvia.
Okay.
You know, we just voted tonight to have a in-house audit on all departments, okay? Because we do wanna fix the problems that may occur. And a lot of stuff that you're talking about in that documentation that you have there are not even his job duties. I will provide you with the job duties of every department in the city for you, Nick, because I did ask for the job duties of everybody in the departments when I got elected, and I took the time to read all those job duties, and I'll provide them to you as well.
I have those job duties, you know.
He overstepped his bounds, then, if he was performing other people's jobs.
Nobody, nobody... I never said if he's guilty or not guilty, and you didn't either, Jan.
So you brought him back without knowing?
No, well, no.
Everybody at the meeting agreed that we needed more information, and then the mayor fired him. So what are we supposed to do?
Nick.
He's the administrator. How many times have I said this up here?
And we have a charter that protects employees and the administration.
It's one thing if you don't like the mayor, or you don't like GPD or the Legal Department. It's another thing to try and make it work. There's none of that.
It's not about like.
There's none of that here. You know, it's all just, it's spinning wheels in mud, it's smoke and mirrors, pointing this way, never coming back here. Never.
Correspondents from the clerk.
I have none, sir.
Mayor's report. "I met with Dr. Scarborough, the president of Akron University, earlier this week, and will be following up with his office with the hopes that we might generate interest in establishing a university satellite in Macedonia. I also met with Congressman Dave Joyce this week to help and establish funding for the proposed new transportation bill." Next, we have committee reports.
Mr. Mayor, we had a meeting for the planning meeting, and, let's see, we went over Highland, Sprint Tower expansion, Nerdonia Hills master plan for an amendment there. Fun and stuff. They're gonna have a zombie platform. You missed it, Mr. Hopkins. And also Lake Forest Homeowners Association. There was a patio proposal as well. Our next planning commission, I mean, planning commission meeting is gonna be Monday, October... Wait, I think, October twentieth at five-thirty.
Mr. Mayor, on the Finance Committee, we will... I've gotta restructure the meeting dates, but my intent is that we will move forward as soon as possible with the assistance of the Finance Director. He was working on it. And we will, I will have to check on the meeting schedule, and I'll be providing that to council and to you as soon as possible.
Are there any other committee reports?
Mr. Mayor, the Charter Review Commission is being organized, and packets went out to all members on September twenty-second, and I'll keep you advised and everyone else advised who may be interested once the schedule is confirmed. Part of the packet information is requesting the members to provide us information of when they'd be available for the meetings that are, will be starting shortly. So, thank you.
Any other committee reports?
Parks and Recreation will be getting together next Wednesday at seven o'clock at the Recreation Center. Upstairs in the back rooms, people are welcome. We are talking about the future of the entire, not just the recreational center, but our park systems. Thank you.
Any other committee reports? Jim, Department reports, please.
Yes, Mayor. I just want to know that, everyone to know, I'm sorry, sir, that you weren't around when we had our talk. But even as long as two weeks ago with Nick Molnar, he came on the job site, 'cause we had to go to another home from there, you know, to look at another residential residence, their home. It's been my intention all along. I told Building, I told GPD, we have two choices. Guardrails or put in the pipe. Everybody's in full agreement with me, we're gonna put in the pipe. I had to redesign, because all the fire hydrants happen to be in your main water line is in the ditch. So, it's a tricky thing, but we're gonna be able to do it. Your yard will have complete pipe with a, without a catch basin. Or, yeah, you have a catch basin, and you'll have pipe. So your driveway automatically, whatever you decide to do, when you redo your driveway, or whatever, you can do whatever you want, 'cause you'll be able to expand it any way you want, 'cause you'll have pipe. Same with all your neighbors, probably going as far down as the vaults that cross over. We already talked about this, and again, I apologize if I didn't get to anybody sooner, but we have to make sure that we have the funding available to do these things. It's gonna be considerably, little bit more money there. And today, I figured out a way to, maybe we could do that. I talked to Nick about it, I talked to Sylvia about it. If anybody else would like to know, I would be more than happy to tell them, or at least talk to them. So we are going to be in closing notes, and you should be fine. Okay? I just wanted to remind everybody of the meeting, the people that live on Iroquois and Black Hawk, that I'm gonna have that meeting October second. Some people have already approached me on that. And so that's one of the things we're gonna have to look at, but I'm still gonna have that meeting. And also the meeting on October seventh with Republic. I suggest everybody comes, so you could get a good idea of how this is gonna be with the new containers, for the automation. A lot of people are concerned, I don't... It's going on all over, so come to the meeting, and the two head honchos will be here, so they'll be able to explain everything, the building, the whole process. So I suggest everybody comes, and that's, again, October seventh at six o'clock. We are gonna start the striping. They're gonna do all the long lines first, the center lines and the edge lines. Okay? So, that'll be done first. I believe they're gonna start that on Friday night. They're gonna try to do most of this work at night, so it doesn't interfere with the daily traffic. And then, from, once they do the center lines and the edge lines, then we'll go to the other things, the crossbars and so on. Also, this Friday or Saturday, you'll see that the City Hall parking lot will be closed, one section, 'cause I'm gonna reseal it and have it re-stripped. And then, on Sunday, they'll do the other half of the lot, seal it and stripe it. I'm hoping that by sealing this, I can get a couple more years of life out of the parking lot that'll keep it okay. So, that's where we're at right now, and that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Mike?
Thanks, Mayor. Commercial update, new construction. We have eighty-nine alterations, twenty-eight. Residential update, we have thirty-six home starts this year. Sixty-three are under construction, fourteen additions, twenty-two alterations. Zoning, we have three hundred and two point of sales to date, and three hundred and ninety-seven contractors have registered so far this year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Tim?
No report, Mayor.
Tonight, instead of our chief, who's not feeling too well, we have Lieutenant Vince Yakapovich. Vince?
And I have no report, Mayor.
All right, Nick?
No report, Mayor.
Tom?
I do.
Okay.
On an uplifting note, I think most of council is aware, the mayor's certainly aware, that about twenty years ago, the city counterclaimed on a foreclosure that was filed by Greg Brothers and the St. Gallus Development Corporation concerning Pilepoint, the last remaining unsold lot that was there. Since that time, you should, a judgment, basically an agreement on settlement, we had countersued for the back taxes, as well as the assessment costs and interest that were incurred by the city on that particular lot. It's a rather long and involved and complicated formula that the court came up with. The court expected a quick sale. In fact, there was a piece of it that was supposed to be sold immediately, within ten days after, to the adjacent property owner, and that never occurred. And that basically left that property, because it has some issues with it there for some twenty years, at least I think it's twenty years. The property was deeded to the city in trust for the purposes of carrying this formula out. We did have, early on, several real estate brokers who handled the transactions or attempted to market the property, all failed to do so. The next time we went out to try to solicit through requests for proposals for brokers to come in and sell and market the property, everybody that came in wanted a rather large retainer fee to be paid by the municipality. For that to be done, we decided to try to do it ourselves. And it's been on the city's website for a lot of years, as a direct result of the mayor's involvement, pushing this property, pushing this property, pushing this property. The city did receive an offer to purchase that property. It has to be approved by the Greggs, it has to be approved by the city. There is some... There is some, again, complicated matters, we wanna make sure that all of the taxes are paid, that's about $145,000, $140,000. We have to figure out what the assessment and cost on that parcel of property were, and reimburse for that. It looks as if, and we have a deadline coming up rather quickly, that once we focus our attention on that, we'll be able to finally move that property to the benefit of the city and all the taxes.
Thank you, because that's been a long haul, and you've been involved all the way along, so... Alright, Mark? Alright. Is there any unfinished business? Any new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming this evening.